Good evening and welcome to the September 21st, 2021 Gilderlin Central School District, Special Board of Education meeting. Would you all please silence your cellphone and rise for the pledge? As I mentioned before, this is a special meeting of the Gilderlin Central School District Board of Ed. This is to interview candidates for an open seat created by the resignation of Mr. Benjamin Goze on August 23rd, 2021. I'll just explain the process a little bit for those people who are watching. The board is using a process that's used in the past to fill a vacant seat. The board is interviewing individuals who have expressed an interest in serving a term that will begin October 5th, 2021, and end on May 17th, 2022. We'll be interviewing candidates this evening. The meeting is televised, livestreamed, and recording will be posted to the district website. Immediately following the interviews, the board will adjourn to executive session to discuss the candidates, and the candidates will be informed of the outcome in the next day or two. The board will appoint the successful candidate on October 5th, 2021. And now I'll turn it over to our host this evening, Mirza Klawik.
Thank you, Dr. Ravid. Tonight, we have six candidates who have expressed an interest in being appointed to the open seat of the Board of Education. The candidates have been randomly selected to determine the order in which they will answer each of the questions. For example, Mr. Genovese will respond to the first question, then Ms. Malita will answer first on the second question, and so on. You will have three minutes to answer the first question. Our timekeeper will hold up the yellow card when you have 30 seconds left, and the red card when you are out of time. Please be sure to wrap up your comments when your time is up. So that takes us to our first question. We'll start with Mr. Genovese. Please take a few moments to introduce yourself, Mr. Genovese, as you tell us about yourself. Be sure to share information about your background, including your qualifications for serving on the Gilderlin Board of Education. Also, be sure to comment on any ways you have participated in board-sponsored activities, such as community conversations, public meetings on topics such as the budget, priority meetings, et cetera.
Well, thanks. Thanks for considering me, and thanks for giving me an opportunity to answer your questions. Well, I'll give you the basics first. I'm a husband. My wife is my best teacher, a father. My son graduated from high school here, 2011. I am a Christian, not in the hateful and bigoted way which our new director of DEI mentioned, but more like John Lewis in "Making Good Trouble." I'm an independent voter, and I've been a resident of Gilderlin since 2004. I have a bachelor's and master's in education from Hostory University down on Long Island, and grew up mostly in Queens, which I suspect you already know from my accent that I've been unable to get rid of since even coming up here in 1980. When we lived in Albany, I was on the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee and was also the Assistant Director of the Youth Choir and on the board of our church. Did a lot of training there. I started work as an elementary school music teacher in a very small, poor, segregated school district on Long Island. Got laid off for budgetary reasons, and I realized that the kids, music wasn't going to be enough for the kids. They needed to do more. So I went back for my master's in elementary education so I could have a wider range of things to offer to the kids. And this comes from a lifetime commitment to a lifestyle of learning. And I think that fits really well with the board's stated mission of inspiring kids, inspiring students to be lifelong learners so that they can become their best selves out there in the world. And a lot of that stems from a question that one of the professors, a professor of what we call now STEM learning in my master's, who rolled into the classroom and looked at everybody before introducing himself and said, "How will you teach students to live in a world you can't imagine?" And that's something that's been really important to me in all my life. Unfortunately, I couldn't get a teaching job back in the late 70s because budgets were very tight. And at that point, I had a master's in experience, and even though a couple of principals wanted to hire me, they couldn't because of the school boards telling them that, you know, their T's too expensive. So I had to sort of reinvent myself and find out how I could do something to use my educational background. So I spent a lot of years with the government in organizational development, staff development, and stuff, creating learning organizations and learning teams focusing on all of the different levels of change from the individual to the interpersonal, to the institutional, to the systemic.
Thank you, Mr. Genovese. Ms. Malita?
Thank you. Well, that's a tough act to follow. So my name is Narina Malita. I'm currently an attorney. I work for a judge in Montgomery County. I'm the principal law clerk. I research whatever it is that we're working on and write decisions for the judge to sign and obviously review, approve, and sign. Before that, I was the managing attorney and vice president of legal operations at Solomon &amp; Solomon, which is a local law firm off of Washington Ave extension, and I did that for about eight years. I finished, so I'm going reverse chronological, I finished law school in Michigan, and I did my undergrad in Canada in psychology and law. That's a double major. And so my life's taken me from Romania, which is where I was born, to Canada, where I did high school and undergrad, and then to Michigan for law school where I met my husband, and he's from here. So that's how I ended up being here. English is my second language. And recently, I've been elected to the Gilderlin Public Library Board of Trustees. So I'm a newly elected trustee on the GPL Board, and I really enjoy that role. I'm looking forward to maybe working with the school board. My two young kids will be going to school here. My five-year-old is starting kindergarten, actually this year, and my two-year-old obviously will go later on. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malita. Mr. Call?
Hi, my name's Eric Call. Let's see, resident of Gilderlin since 2001. My education, did a little college and spent many years in the United States Navy. Veteran of the Persian Gulf War. Most recently, oh, with the Navy, I became a nuclear engineer, and that landed me a job at the University of Albany in the Environmental Health and Safety Office, where I've been for the last 15 years. I have two daughters, one who's a senior in college, a graduate of Gilderlin, and my youngest daughter is a current senior here now. I haven't overly participated in the school board functions, although I've been very active and vocal in my daughter's cases in school and how they're, you know, what I can do locally. I saw the opportunity to, you know, join the board. I think my daughter, my youngest, who's a senior, feels, you know, it's okay now because I can't embarrass her too much by being out here. And obviously, when they're out of the nest, I have more time on my hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Call. Ms. Blasiak?
Hi, I'm Kim Blasiak. I've been in Gilderlin since 2015. I have four children in the district, a second grader, a sixth grader, a sophomore, and a senior. I'm a graduate of Syracuse University in their supply chain program. Currently, I'm a stay-at-home mom. However, I do a lot of volunteer work. I am the outreach coordinator for New York State PTA, which actually puts me on their Board of Directors. I'm also, I was on the New York State Educational Conference Board. I'm currently on the NICE Ed Community and Family Engagement Framework Committee. I am also on the NICE Ed Title I Committee of Practitioners. I am treasurer at Pine Bush for their PTA. I am the co-president for the Gilderlin SEPSA, which is a special education PTA. I am a vice president at the Gilderlin Council for PTA. I do a lot of PTA, as you can hear. I'm also the president of the Board of Directors for a nonprofit called KKC Cares, which helps our youth who have unfortunately been sexually assaulted. It helps them go through the process of court and get supports that they need. I am very active within the district, pretty much. I think I know almost everyone here just because I've either been to meetings or been to different things. I'm just, I'm a firm believer that everything is a partnership. Like, I can't just send my kids to school and expect the school to do things, just like they can't send my kid home and expect it. I've always gone into every year with all of my children's teachers, just saying, "Look, I'm gonna drive you crazy, but this is a partnership. We have to work together to make sure my kids achieve their goals." And when this opened up, I just thought, I'm always active, so I may as well put my name in as well, because we live in a community. This is our community. Our job is to be a partner and make sure that every single child in this committee, or this community, gets what they need. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Mr. Donegan?
Good evening, board members and candidates and administration. My career actually has just begun. I have started working about four months ago at Hannaford as a service clerk. My other side of work, which was non-paid but very important, was to work in this district as student government, PTSA rep. Where on my last month doing that job, we got the Public Relations Officer, which was formerly called a Social Justice, but they voted to change it to Public Relations. And I worked as student inclusion, as a financial officer, where if the small cafe, which is now called the Quiet Cafe, we worked to change that to the Quiet, where we put it for students with autism and disabilities. Soundboards to do good for voicing and hearings. The school's Start Time Task Force, which was a three-year adventure, got done last May. And I am very passionate about public education. I have been very vocal in the last four years, well, three years really, on Betsy DeVos and what we've seen happen in the education system. I've been very vocal on those issues, and I'm very honored to get to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Donegan. And finally, we have Ms. Shuley.
Oh, very good. You got the name right. So my name is Betsy Shealy. I am a parent in the district. My daughter is in ninth grade currently. My undergrad is from Siena. I was a political science person. And then I worked for a number of years in admissions out of Boston. I did admissions, and this was part of my territory, actually. So I visited the school, the school as an admissions rep way back when. And then I got a job with the New York Lottery. They had a Leadership of Tomorrow Scholarship Program. They need an administrator for. I ended up being the educational administrator for all of the New York Lottery programs, which was Leaders of Tomorrow Scholarship, Educator of the Week Program, The School Bus, and there was a winner achievers essay contest, which was for middle schoolers. The lottery then had to partner with an educational institution due to funding streams. And so the position was then located at CASDA, which is the Capital Area School Development Association, based out of the University of Albany School of Education. I was at CASDA for 15 years under a number of roles. The last role was as Associate Executive Director. That job was serving the Dean of Education for two days a week at the School of Ed at the University of Albany, and three days a week doing professional development plans with our 100-plus member school districts. My forte was grants, grant administration, and my specialty was rural school issues. After CASDA, I went to be Director of New York Kids Program, which is a member item program that focuses on improvement. Schools in need of improvement, but instead of doing, instead of penalizing, they would do best practices schools and try and apply those approaches to underperforming schools. That funding ended, and I ended up as an association manager, which is basically being an executive director of a not-for-profit. I handled three not-for-profits at the same time. And you do everything from answer the phone to do their CLE credits to their website. That had a lot of travel. So in an effort to be closer to home, I am currently the Marketing Director for Northern Rivers Foster Care Program and their Parent Engagement Coordinator. So I do recruitment and marketing for them. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate the time.
Thank you for that. So for each of the next questions, you'll have two and a half minutes. Our timekeeper will hold up the yellow card when you have 30 seconds left, and the red card when your time is up. Again, please be sure to wrap up your comments when your time is up. Question two, this time we will start with Ms. Malita. Please explain for the members of the Board of Education and the community why you're interested in serving on the board at this time. What are your priorities for the district? What aspects of Gilderlin Central School District do you value most? And what aspects would you like to see improved?
So that was a multifaceted question. I'm gonna try to remember exactly what you asked. I think it was starting with why I wanted to join right now, and it's because the opportunity presented itself right now. I did not run for a position in May. I chose to run for the library board because library is really, really important to me, and also because I was a little nervous about the school board being, you know, a bigger organization. And I haven't really been involved locally as much, and I didn't know, you know, local politics or whatever it is that we need to know for the school board. Since my, you know, my five-year-old will be starting school this year, and I'm saying "will be" because I know it has already started, but we were on vacation, so she hasn't really started yet. She's starting on Thursday. I want to know what's going on in the community, and I want to be able to be in the loop on, you know, what it is that the school board is doing, what the schools are requiring, what, you know, of the teachers, of the students, of the parents. And I also think that, you know, these are tumultuous times. If I could help in any way, I'd like to offer, you know, my skills to the board. And particularly, that includes my mediation abilities. I am an attorney, and I'm trained in mediation as well, and I know there's been, you know, contentious issues in the board, especially this year. And so I am very diplomatic at approaching certain issues, and I can hear out all sides, whatever it is that they're working on, because that's what I do for work as well. I have to look at both sides and sometimes kind of make the parties meet in the middle and avoid litigation. So I think that's why I've joined today. I'm not really sure where the question went after that. Sure, just like the second part?
What district do you value most? What aspects would you like to see improved?
Well, like I said, my children are just going into school, so I'm not familiar with what's going on, and I want to be familiar, and I want to help. So if the teachers need help in any way, you know, if the administration needs help in any way, I'm there to help. Like I said, I think my mediation skills will be valuable. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Up next, we have Mr. Call.
Oh, thank you. That's a long question. I think because the opportunity arose to join the board, and I'm at a time where my two daughters, one will, you know, finally, you know, be graduating from the Gilderlin system, and empty nester will give me more opportunity to be more active in the school. Overall, you know, with the exception of the past year, year and a half, two years that have been tumultuous, we have loved Gilderlin schools and everything that they have done for my daughters and my eldest, who's prospering at college. I just think to be more active in the community is something I need to do now that I have more time, and hopefully it'll benefit the school and the school board and future students of Gilderlin High School, Gilderlin Central School District.
Thank you for that. Ms. Blasiak?
I actually put my name in because, like everyone has said so far, the opportunity came up. But before I did that, I sat down with my kids and asked them, and my oldest actually said, "Mom, you gotta." So I put my name in because if they said no, then it would have been a no. It had to be a family decision. I just, I love the community. I absolutely love the community. Even before this, I was at Towah Center for my son's cross-country team, and it's just the definition of community, where everyone comes together and you know everyone, and everyone helps everyone else. And I just wanted to be part of that. And especially, I mean, I've paid attention since I've moved here, but especially over the last, like, year and a half with COVID and seeing a lot of the stuff that went on with the board. Like, in my positions with PTA, I see a lot of stuff that other people don't see sometimes coming from the governor's office or the state ed office. And so I wanted to be part of that to help the district that I consider community. Everything, like, what do I like about the district? It's awful. It's terrible. I don't like it at all. Just kidding. Seriously. No, it's, I've gotta say, the community, the teachers are really strong. I mean, you're gonna find problems in any district, so we could sit and pick out any district and say we have problems. The one thing that I would like to see improved probably is more student voice. I know that the district does a really good job with it now, but especially getting, like, our kids to start advocating a little more where, I mean, they're the ones that go to the school. They're the ones that are sitting butt in seat, they're taking the classes, so just kind of getting them involved a little bit earlier in the process, because they know a lot more than most of us think they do. And, I mean, they just got through a pandemic, so they could tell us what they really like and don't like about their school, so.
Thank you for that. Mr. Donegan?
So four years ago, at the start of four years ago, I've started getting very involved. Tuesday nights, I would sit down on that couch and I'd watch the school board meeting, or I'd watch the, where I would read the agenda, the items, and everything. We're at a time where we're facing challenges with great possibility of great outcomes. We're facing a pandemic, as was mentioned. We have, we're dealing with a variant right now that's attacking young children, and we have vaccinations, which is a great outcome. We're also facing, last year, we started facing this whole entire racial diversity and inclusion talk, which was very important. I think it should have came years before last year, but the students spoke out. I was in the high school last year for, you know, a semester went remote. I still seen how students were active at student government meetings, the Students for Inclusion, and it's very important for that student voice to come in. And so we are facing a lot of challenges as a district, but there's a lot of great possibilities that will come out of this, challenges. And so one thing I think the district can work on, if I remember, is that one of the questions? I think we need to do more on diversity hiring and work progressive, I love that word, progressive, to eliminate that achievement gap in the district and for our students.
Thank you, Mr. Donegan. Ms. Shuley?
So why now? I just did a marketing campaign called, it was like hashtag, "If not you, then who?" So if you're, you know, and foster parenting is one of those things that not everyone can do, but it's like, the question is, if you don't do it, who does do it? And so when the email came in and you're looking for a person, and I was like, well, well, you know, if it's not me, who would it be? And, well, the only way you're gonna see that is if you come to the meeting and volunteer. So here I am. We chose, you know, I chose my house based on this district. I had all the data for all the districts up along the Hudson, and Gilderlin was our choice, and this is why we're here. And so I would like to give back to a district that is really, you know, Altima Elementary did us so well, and, you know, the middle school was great with Mr. Laster. So hoping to give back. And what I do value most is the professionals in the building. I know how hard they work. I've seen the professional development. They do, I, you know, they have a lot of teachers who are overachievers, and you don't get that everywhere. And it does come down to community, and that they feel safe enough to teach here and be here. So that is what I value most. And what I would like to see improved, I guess, would be, I do agree on the student voice thing. I think we've come off of a lot of helicopter parenting over the last decade, and, you know, maybe we can transition a little bit more to student voice and self-advocacy. This group of kids is just very good. They, they're smart, and they know their mind. They have a lot of information that they process on the daily, and I would like to see some career pathways open up, instead of making everybody a four-year school. So that's what I would like to see improved.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Genovese.
So the country and I think the district is at a pivot point in America's development. And it's who we are, and what are we about, and where are we going? And my experience on the DEI Committee this year, and looking at the stuff on the website, the mission, the values, the positivity project that folks are working on, I'm saying, my God, this is the kind of stuff I've been working with all my life, and I think it's exactly the right thing that needs to be done now. We've got a director of DEI, you know, I listened to the podcast he had with the Altima Enterprise. Oh, my God, you know, what, you know, what a fantastic leader he'll be able to be. And I think the really, the most important thing, I think, that drove me to do it was this book that you folks have chosen to work with, The Five Practices for Equity-Focused School Leadership. And to me, when I started reading this, I said, "Oh, my God, I didn't know that I was about equity focus in the stuff that I've been trying to do throughout my life." And it points to, in the first section, three things that I think are exactly the qualities that students need to succeed in the 21st century. I spent a lot of time hiring people. My last job was as Director of Training and Staff Development for the State IT Agency. So I was dealing with people from every different agency, from cable pullers to post-docs, from kids just out of school with every color hair, tattoos and stuff, to doctors of architecture who wore perfect blue suits, red ties, and white shirts every day. How do we get them to work as a team? How do they all, you know, work together and listen to each other to achieve what they needed to do? And I'm looking at these three things, which are step back from certainty and engage with curiosity, avoid blame, and instead focus on the strengths and assets that everyone brings to the table. And this is the most important thing, establish a habit of learning together. So I think the district is on the point to, just to get there, to do that. The priorities would be to get the board and the committee to set an example for all of those things, to get better conversations through all members of the community, and I think we can do that, and that's what I like best of what we're doing, and that's what we need to do to improve.
Thank you for that, Mr. Genovese. That takes us on to our next question. This time, we're gonna be starting with Ms. Blasiak. The question is, if you were to be selected as the new board member, what do you think will be the biggest challenges you would face? How will you overcome those challenges?
I'm gonna pass that to Mr. Call, who is taking the third question first.
Thank you. I would've waited. Could you repeat the question?
As the new board member, what do you think will be the biggest challenges you would face? How will you overcome those challenges?
Wow. You know, I, with, I know the workings of the school through my daughters. I don't know exactly, to be honest, the school board functions. I know decisions are made and very difficult decisions, especially during the times of COVID. I would imagine moving forward from that is going to be a big challenge and it's something that's going to be, need to be addressed continually. My goal and the reason for me, you know, applying here today is to be an active voice and learn and grow and help and continue to foster a great school community. So do I have any specific challenges in mind besides the coming out of the COVID, hopefully? Not yet, but I'd love to learn. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Call. Ms. Blaziac?
Personally, I think the biggest challenge, if I did have a seat on the board, would... I know this sounds crazy, but probably be the grocery store. And I say that only because it seems like even if I see, like if I see a board of ed member at the grocery store, it's like, oh, yeah, remember about this at the district or this at the district? And just people that would come up and probably start asking questions, which you don't answer independently. You're a group, you're a board. You work as a committee and the whole thing. But I think just the outside, like maybe the outside questions sometimes, that would probably be something that would throw me for a loop or something. But other than that, I would just intend to work my best as a team and do my best for the district.
Thank you. Mr. Donegan?
Do you mind repeating that question?
Yeah, no problem. If you were to be selected as the new board member, what do you think will be the biggest challenges you would face? How will you overcome those challenges?
I, I think the question of overcoming the challenge would be have to be a team of a nine-member administration to overcome. And how to go forward overcoming is what we have learned through this whole entire challenge and building upon that solution. Major student voices, as well as still being on the path, but changing the roadmap to that saying, I don't remember what it is on the wall here, empowering all students to succeed in the 21st century. And so to overcome the challenge, it would have to be a team effort. Not a grocery store.
Thank you. Ms. Shuley?
Yeah, it's a good question. I'd like to say that the biggest worry I have or the thing that I would need to overcome is bias. And that is, I don't know, people are from Gilderlin. People came up and through this system and, you know, when you run into the, you know, we've always done it this way before type of bias. And so that tends to stop me a bit and that hinders my learning. And so I know that I will have to have a learning curve, especially when you're starting. You guys all know each other, you know, no one else is starting at the same time as you as a board member. So it's getting to know the dynamics of the group. It's getting to know the lay of the land, the finances. You have a really big vote coming up for, you know, a capital project. That, you know, that's hard. And I guess the way I would address that, all of that, is to listen for a long time and have my opinion and speak it, but to also be an active listener and a learner. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Genovese?
I think it's, I assume that's a personal question, you know, on how will I personally, what challenges and how will I deal with them? And I think the personal challenge is to live up to the mission, vision and values of the school district, to live up to the goals in everything that I do. And there's all these positivity traits and stuff like that that you have to remember, you know, to do. So I think to be the example, to listen, to ask the right questions and to listen again to see what emerges and how do you do it? And I think that's the way you overcome the challenges. You remember the mission, the vision and the values. You remember to listen. I have a lifetime mindfulness meditation practice and I'm really good at it, but I've got to remember to do it, you know? And the remembering, I think, is the most important thing. And that's what I have to struggle to make sure I do it, to remember that and to practice it.
Thank you for that, Mr. Genovese. Ms. Melita?
So I think the benefit of going last is that I get to say I agree with everyone that's gone before me and say, I'm glad that we all have, I think, the same challenges. Because, you know, as Mr. Call was saying, I don't know the inner workings of the board. And as Ms. Shuley was saying, I don't know any of you and your personalities and your way of interacting. So that's true. I think practically for me, wherever I've started new, the first challenge, besides kind of learning the lay of the land and who people are and what they do and what their role is and what your role is and how to fit in with them, is asserting myself when I need it to. So a lot of the times when I started somewhere, I was younger than people. I had to direct to do something. And they would say eventually something like, we've always done it this way. Or, well, you know, Mr. Such-and-such used to do it this way, so that's what I'm going to do. And, you know, it took me a little bit of time to build up the confidence to say, look, I've researched what it is that you're asking me to because I will not give you an answer if I don't know it. I will go and do my research. And first of all, look at the rules, right? What am I allowed to do? What am I not allowed to do? You're asking me to do X and Y. And I looked at the rule and it says, I can't do X in this instance. And the person will tell me, well, we've always done X. And I think the biggest challenge is to say, well, am I going the right way? Am I going against the grain? Am I doing something wrong by telling them to do it a different way after they've done it a certain way for so long? Maybe longer than I've been alive. And I've been really good about doing that. I think, you know, the way I overcome that is I do my research. I know what the rules are. I know what's expected of me. I know what I'm allowed to do and I'm not allowed to do. And I'm creative at developing a strategy that's going to work, even with the people that have been doing it a certain way for a really long time. And I think that's really important because saying it, we've always done it this way, it's a road to failure sometimes and making mistakes constantly. And so I think that's how I would avoid that is by doing my research, learning everything there is to know about what my role is and then just sticking to what it is I have to do. Thanks.
Thank you for that. On to the next question. This time, we will be starting with Ms. Blaziac. What do you understand to be the primary responsibilities of the Board of Education? What do you understand to be the responsibilities of an individual member of the Board of Education?
Oh, wow. As a collective group, I think, in my opinion, your job is to make sure that every student gets everything that they need, that you're working as a group. There's no agenda. It's just, okay, we have this many students. We need to make sure they all succeed and how are they going to succeed? We need to make sure that our teachers and our staff feel supported. We just, we're supposed to be a soft spot to land. I know that sounds a little crazy, especially with some of the meetings over the last year and everything. But I guess the way I look at it is the board is supposed to be your soft spot to land. They're supposed to essentially have your back as a student and as a staff member, as a teacher, as a community member, and make sure that every student is served. I have to ask, I'm so sorry, what was the second part of the question?
Understand to be the responsibilities of an individual member of the Board of Education?
The individual member? You keep your opinion aside, at least in public. Like, it's my understanding that you don't go out and say, well, this is what we talked about at the Board of Ed meeting and this is how I feel and I agree or I don't agree. No matter what, whether you agree or disagree, you are a team. You work as a team. That's it at the end of the day. That is your team. You cannot be successful if you are just, I mean, I hate to sound corny, but my kids always say, there's no I in team, Mom. It's true. So as an individual of the board, you just always have to remember that you are a representative of the school district, of the board, that you, you don't just all of a sudden just go off on your own. This is a committee. This is a group. This is a team.
Thank you for that, Ms. Blaziac. On to Mr. Donegan?
The primary, the primary responsibility of the Board of Education job is to really make sure all students succeed. By the time they go into kindergarten or they come into the district later on, like I did, coming in fifth grade, I succeeded because of the work that has been done by previous years. And by the time you step up those stairs to receive the diploma from Dr. Wiles or Dr. Rivera, that success doesn't end. The work you guys do here goes into more of the future of our lives because you did an early investment plan for us, for us to be prepared, how to respond to challenges that come our way as adults and to succeed. To me, the board is a governance. We're more of a checks and balances type. We ensure, we're not in the school every day, at least not me anymore. I'm no longer a student. But as a board, we're not in the school every day. The superintendents are, the administration teachers. They report to us and then we vote on what we see is best for the students. And we do keep a check that administration are running the schools effectively. And I do believe that opinions don't matter. I'm a factual guy. I don't want to hear opinions because the facts are important because the facts are what's going to get us through these challenges that we do face.
Thanks for that, Mr. Donegan. On to Ms. Shuley?
The school board, as a mandate, public education funds are to be accounted for. And it's the responsibility of the Board of Education to make sure that Dr. Wiles and her staff are all doing their job. And at the end, we have a balanced budget or we have accountability. The board is part of that. And when you sign on, your vote means that you are reading all of the stuff that you are sent. You are keeping up with the mandates that the state has put down, that you are, you know, financially responsible to your neighbors, the taxpayers, those that are helping the kids learn and grow here in the school system. So as a board member individually, my job would be to stick to the mission, do my homework, read everything I was sent, attend meetings religiously, show up and vote and be an advocate. So that is outward-facing and that is inward-facing. That's outward-facing when you're out in the public. And it's inward-facing so that your other board members know that you're on their team and that we're making a decision best for all, not for one. So I always say that a school board member is the just most thankless job. And I used to work, I've worked with a lot of different boards, but board of directors. And usually there's some benefit for that, whether it be business or whatnot. But a school board is made up of caring citizens. And showing up shows that you care. And doing the work shows that you value your fellow taxpayer and you're not making decisions willy-nilly. So that's how I would handle it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Shuley. On to Mr. Genovese?
I heartily second what everyone has said. And I'd like to add, though, that as a board, we need to exemplify the mission, vision and values. Right? I mean, as a strategic thinker and someone who's done that all of my life, I mean, that's got to be number one, to facilitate the mission, vision and values. And of course, to fulfill the legal requirements. But I think part of that is to inspire the necessary conversations across the district. So it's not enough just for the board to talk amongst each other. Or as Matt was talking about, opinions and facts. So what are the facts? What are the opinions, you know? So we have to inspire the necessary conversations about whatever the issue is. And when I, when I went through some of the videos of prior board meetings, I see most of the people who were making comments and some of the posted comments, a lot of the stuff is, right, well, you guys went and did this and didn't talk to anybody. So how are we getting the information out there about how do we talk and what? So this notion of inspiring necessary conversations. And as far as an individual member, certainly the individual member is to add to all of that. But for me personally, and I think for each board member, you have a specific, what shall I say, contribution and genius to add to the board, just as each child in the classroom has a specific genius and a specific contribution to make, a contribution to the learning team. So I see my responsibility as, like John Lewis says, to make good trouble. And what I mean by that is following a lot of the stuff that Martin Luther King talked about in his famous sermon, tough minds and tender hearts. How do you ask the tough questions and have a tough mind about stuff, but at the same time exhibiting a tender heart and compassionate empathy and all that sort of stuff and making the balance?
Thanks for that, Mr. Genovese. On to Ms. Melita?
So I think as a board, you have a really tough job about balancing what's important, not only for the children, but for the teachers and also with all the mandates that come down from the state, that you have to balance that with budgets, with, you know, staff shortages, with children that have disabilities and getting them acclimated to the school. So it's a lot of balancing of different factors and different interests of people, which can be difficult because they don't always align. And I think that as an individual board member, my job would be to bring my experience, my life experience, my walk of life and tell you how I see things, you know? And Mr. Genovese might see it a little differently. And my job is not to shut him down, but just listen. And then, you know, maybe Ms. Shuley would have a different opinion and I would listen to that as well. But I wouldn't necessarily, you know, it is a team effort, but at the same time, everyone has something to add, which might be different than your fellow board member. So I think what I would add is listen and take in what everyone else can bring with an open mind, knowing that I may not always agree with whatever everybody else is saying. But oftentimes, I haven't been through that person's experience. So it's very interesting to see a different side of the issue when you're debating it. I may come at it from a legal standpoint and just be like, well, the rule says this and the rule says that and that's how we have to do it. But someone else might have a different idea that has worked in the past. And so I think that's what I would bring to the board. That's what a board member should bring is they shouldn't back down just because their opinion is different than the other person, but they should also consider that other person's opinion. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And finally, on for this question, Mr. Call?
As a board member, I'm sure it's incredibly difficult job with all the fiscal responsibilities and safety and health aspects that we've been going through, balancing budgets, staffing, as everybody has mentioned, quite difficult. And I couldn't imagine how it is right now from a position outside the board. I just know that, you know, to be a part of the board, I would be actively engaged and attend meetings, read requirements, mandates, rules, laws, whatever was necessary to be a productive member of the board and the team to make Gilderlin Schools and continue to be the success that they have been over all these years. As an individual, I would openly listen to my neighbors and friends and other, you know, town and school district parents and people to, you know, gather their opinions and their decisions and what they want to see moving forward with the school community. And I would weigh that. And I would weigh that against my own opinions and my own science and facts and formulate a good answer and hopefully make some contributions to the board and to the success of Gilderlin Schools.
Thank you for that, Mr. Cole. On to our next question. We're going to start this one with Mr. Donegan. This question is, "The district has spent time working on building more culturally responsive and inclusive schools. What are your thoughts on this?"
As just leaving the high school, it is the most essential and needed part in the times we're living in in this country. You have the Black Lives Matter movement that has swept across the nation in the last year, and it has impacted the students. And I believe that word inclusion is very essential and vital to the work the district has done and still needs to do on surrounding the culture of hiring minority teachers, hiring Director of DEI, which I was very happy to see, and Mr. Pincinna, who was actually my 11th grade teacher, who I love dearly. And we got to expand the horizon and open that conversation on the culture to bring in more and take out the old. The old ways of thoughts are not working anymore. You have new minds in, and they're ready to get things done. That's what I've learned, what we've all learned, I hope, in the last year of this pandemic, the politics. We're ready for new minds. We're ready to take out the old ways of thinking, at times prejudice and racist, and to think openly minded on what can be. I love the quote that a vice president uses, "What can be unburdened by what has been." And I think that's very important to do going on more into the future.
Thank you for that, Mr. Donegan. On to Ms. Shulley.
A culturally responsive and inclusive school is lovely, and it's a goal and it's constant work. So the work has begun, and we've done well. The needle has to move more, but I know that it takes time. You know, we're an education institution, and we just need more education. And it's not necessarily for our students. It might be for their parents or their grandparents. And it is maybe that some of the continuing ed, you know, offerings that Gilderlin does offer could include some of those. I really think that the kids in our school, it might not be the problem in terms of the culturally inclusive environment that they seek. You know, I could be wrong. I don't walk the halls every day. I do like the club offerings that the school has encouraged and embraced and funded. I think that, you know, breaks down walls and some stereotypes. But it's a heavy lift as the entire nation is seen. And it's a constant conversation. So I encourage Gilderlin to continue to have the conversation regardless of the naysayers who say that it's, you know, un-American to be so progressive in terms of inclusion. I think of Maslow's hierarchy of needs and that, you know, we need kids to come to school. And in order to learn, they have to have food and shelter and clothing, right? And then they can attend, and then they can learn. And so that's where you want to get them. And when you get them, the only way that they can truly realize goals and aspirations is if they are accepted. So, you know, I don't want culturally responsive and inclusive school to be a buzzword. I think it's essential to learning. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Shulley. Mr. Genovese, you have the floor.
Culturally responsive is an unfortunate term. I would prefer culturally welcoming and enhancing because just responding to the culture, how do you know if you're responding appropriately or what? So what you want to do is welcome to put all of that, you know, the individual people, their culture and everything, and get it all out on the table, right? To see what emerges, to see how we put all of that stuff together to contribute to innovation. In my last job, the three words we used for trying to make a learning organization was inclusion, integration, and innovation. And it was inclusion plus integration equals innovation. And what that means is you get everybody in here, and you welcome and you embrace, and you enhance it, right? But then you have to integrate it. You got to put it together. People just can't be separate in doing all that stuff. It's, you know, it's just like, you know, what Matt said when they introduced them, when he talked, he said, "Ipluribus unum," okay? Out of many, one. You want to get the many, okay? And they don't stop being many. They become one. And that's where the innovation comes. That's where the brilliance comes. And that's where we'll inspire people to be lifelong learners and, you know, all that mission, vision, and values stuff, and how we will turn the point, both in this country and in the district for the kids that we have.
Thank you for that, Mr. Genovese. On to Ms. Melita.
Can you repeat the question? I just want to make sure I address it directly.
"The district has spent time working on building more culturally responsive and inclusive schools. What are your thoughts on this?"
So I think it's definitely important for us to be culturally inclusive and responsive. I think this year has been, this past year and a half, I should say, almost two, has been really sad to see people divide on such a basic thing, you know, as race or culture. It's just been really, really sad because we, I think, have forgotten that we are all people. Like, you know, we're all people. So to see that divide this year has been really difficult for me, I think for most people. And I think, you know, to work on that is really crucial. But I don't think it's, I don't think it will happen easily or overnight. I think, you know, I was going to say it starts at the top, you know, because of course, we've seen if someone is ignorant at the top, that they will divide. But it also starts at the bottom with the actual people, like Ms. Shulley was saying, you know, with the education. Sure, we can do it in school. We can do it with the teachers. We could do it with the board. We could do it with the staff. But we can't get into people's homes. And sometimes, you know, you don't know who they're listening to. You don't know where they're coming from. You don't know their financial situation. Maybe you have an idea. But I think it's important to get to people's homes and bring that cultural sensitivity and into people's homes. And that's difficult because you are outside, right? You can't go into people's houses. I feel like working with the students and maybe doing assignments, having like a peer mentor or a person that kind of walks with the students or helps the students or does projects with them that's not of the same culture or race or gender even, might be beneficial in sometimes bringing that home. I'm saying group projects and things like that. So very briefly, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Cole. The floor is yours.
Thank you. That I have a graduate and a senior in high school, I do, I feel Gilderlin Schools have had a pretty good record of inclusivity and diversity. I know our community is growing more and more diverse. And I feel strongly that, you know, the school district should continue with the inclusive and the diversity and the equality throughout the students and the thing. I don't believe the polarization that we've seen over the last couple of years due to politics should be brought into the school, and that should be left far, far away. And the school should be seen as a welcoming environment for all the students to come in and feel free from any diverse background and be inclusive and get the education and the skills and the community that they so deserve.
Thank you for that, Mr. Cole. Ms. Blazek.
This is a tough question. I've been listening to everyone here trying to figure out where I wanted to start on this. I think the district has made great strides in working on this and recognizing that there have been issues that need to be addressed. I believe that this is something that it's going to constantly evolve and constantly change, which it should. You never want to remain stagnant, and you never want it to be a buzzword. Admittedly, that's always my fear when something new comes up as a parent and I hear it, like inclusion and that it's the buzzword. It's checking a box for the state, saying that, yes, we're in on the new thing. I think, at least in this district, we need to start earlier. It is my opinion, just my opinion, that children just, they acclimate to so much, they understand so much. If we started earlier, like I'll take inclusion. Inclusion isn't just race. Inclusion encompasses so many different things. Admittedly, as a parent of students with special needs, inclusion automatically to me goes to special needs. And I always think, why has it not started earlier? Why is it not like co-taught classes? It goes from the top down. I never understood why it didn't go from the bottom up because then children in our district are learning early on that these kids are just kids. They're not just ignoring it when, ignoring the kids when they talk, just thinking, okay, they don't understand because it makes it a lot more difficult once they're combined with kids at the older grades. Culturally responsiveness, I know that the district has sent out a ton of different things. Like, I'm one of those people in the community that says, what do you mean? You didn't see it. They sent something out. I've talked to parents of different cultures. I've brought up, like, the high school used to have the cultural fair, which is, if they do it again, anyone who hasn't seen it, go, it's the most amazing thing. But parents in different cultures want their children, at the end of the day, to be able to embrace their culture while learning the new. And I think we really need to have honest and tough conversations and kind of make ourselves open. And I know you have, but it's awkward and learn from them.
Thank you for that. This is going to take us into our final question, question six. We'll be starting with Ms. Shulley. And the question is, what area of boardwork do you think will be the biggest, will be the biggest learning curve for you? How will you overcome that?
What area of boardwork will be? So any editing whatsoever? So if you're doing bylaw revision, please, that is the worst thing for me ever, tracking changes on bylaw revisions or doing mission statement work. Wordsmithing is not my strength. Financials are my strength, strategic planning. Those are my strengths. But when it comes to wordsmithing and editing, those are very poor areas for me.
Thank you for that. Mr. Genovese.
The relevant laws, rules, regulations, policies, and procedures, all that stuff that's up there on the website under the Board Policies Procedures Manual, you know, learning all of that to make sure that I really understand it and don't violate any of it and that I exemplify it, you know, in everything I do and I use it, you know, when I'm asked to vote on something.
Ms. Melita.
So I'm actually the opposite of Ms. Shulley. Because I do this for a living. I'm really good at editing and researching and rewriting things over and over again. But math usually doesn't come quick to attorneys. I am good at math if you give me some time, but don't ask me to, you know, balance the budget. I wouldn't know where to start. So, you know, I think if you give me the formula, I'll work with it. But I will not know how to do that on my own. But I will pick it up if I have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cole.
I got to honestly admit that I think it will be a challenge, complete gambit of things. And, but I want to also admit that I would be up for that challenge. And it would be a learning curve, and it would be something I feel confident I can handle.
Thank you. Ms. Blazek.
I would have to say finance, to be honest. I mean, I love to research. It makes me happy to actually look over laws and policy procedure. I'm very lucky that our New York State PTA Executive Director gives us like everything from the state with all the new stuff. So she bombards us. But I figured I would ask questions. Neil would be my new best friend. So he would hopefully explain things too. But I would ask questions, finance, though.
Hey, Mr. Donegan.
I think this makes me the third to say finance. Me and Matt is a no-no because by the grace of God, I pass Matt. And Mr. Sanders, I will be going to you a lot for the advisement on the finance. March, once the board votes on the budget, becomes their budget, if on the board, I'm going to be putting out all these ideas, I'm sure somebody, probably Mr. Sanders, who might approach me and say, that cost is too much. Same time, I like to learn finance, learn how to do a balanced budget. But I'm a policy guy. I love reading policy, studying policy, and researching policy.
Thank you for that, Mr. Donegan. That concludes all of our prepared questions tonight. I would like to thank you for your participation in this evening's event. I will now turn the meeting back to Dr. Rivera.
Thank you, Mirzad, and thank you to all the candidates who came tonight and took time out of their evening to answer our questions. We have one other agenda item before we move into executive session. This has to do with a contract on transportation bids. I'll turn this over to Mr. Sanders.
And while Mr. Sanders approaches the podium, I just want to thank the young man to my right, Spencer Snawski, who was our very able timer this evening with the yellow and the red cars. So great job, Dan.
I think I saw that.
Okay, we have one item this evening. It's a recommendation for a bid award. So the recommendation is to award transportation contract services to two vendors, Northland Transportation. And on your bid sheet, it says utilizing option two, which is the combined runs. And Rajah Group LLC is the other vendor that we're awarding. The bid from Amazing Grace, the recommendation is to reject that bid.
I have a motion to approve the service contract. Gloria, second Rebecca. Any questions or comments about these? Go ahead, Gloria.
I just have to comment, Neil, as I read the weekly report. I was like really shocked by the increase in the rates by two of those vendors. Like, it was over 200 and something percent increase from the year before, the Northland Transportation and Amazing Grace. I was shocked that they, at this time, you know, I mean, I know business is business, but knowing what we're all going through and especially school districts, I have to say, it was very disappointing.
I was shocked and disappointed as well. We didn't anticipate that. We did have emergency contracts with all three vendors to allow us to start the year. And as a result of that, we had to take a further step, which is we have the ability from the New York State Education Transportation Department to have these 30-day contracts to start the year and get things underway. But in that interim time, we do need to bid the services. So we did receive pricing on all the routes. We turned around and bid those same routes out again. And as you mentioned, Gloria, some vendors chose to increase their prices quite a bit, exceptional amounts from what they had, what are currently offering, being offered to us right now under a 30-day agreement. So that resulted in the recommendation.
Rajah, is that how you say the group?
Yes, Rajah Group.
I'd like to commend them for their consideration.
Yes.
And their pricing.
Blanca.
I echo everything that Gloria said. I'm outraged that folks, companies would raise their prices right now in the midst of a pandemic. I find it to be highly insensitive. Also, we are still going with one of those people, though, that has raised the prices. So could you explain that?
Sure. Unfortunately, we don't have the resources ourselves to take all of these routes on. So there's the one that was the most egregious in terms of their pricing. We do believe we have another option for those that we're able to pursue. So we've been working on that to line up another vendor to be able to take that work over. We weren't able to do that with the second vendor. We weren't able to do that with the second vendor. So unfortunately, we have no other options at this point to accept that price for the second bidder.
I also commend, I hope I'm saying that right, Rajah Group or Rejah Group?
Rajah Group.
And thank them tremendously.
Yes, I would agree.
Any other comments or questions? I don't know, Neil, what is like considered price gouging? If there's a like specific definition for that? But it seems like, I don't know, would there be laws against this? It seems to take advantage of, I mean, it's a crisis across the country, but obviously in the state. I, I'm also, you know, happy that we have somebody that's more reasonable. But it seems totally kind of disgusting to take advantage of that right now with public schools. I don't know what other rules there are in place of, or what could be, you know, used to help hold these groups accountable. This is not something that normally happens.
Correct. It's, in my experience, I haven't seen anything like this. But certainly we, we haven't gotten to the point, we're working through this process to make sure we have transportation set up going forward. But that is a conversation that we will try to have either with the state of New York or with our attorney in terms of making people aware of this kind of practice that's occurring.
Kelly.
So option two, are we approving any bids from the Rajah Group on here?
Bid is noted, is being approved. The recommendation is to approve their bid and for Northland, option two.
Oh, so all of Rajah Group?
Yes.
Okay.
Their entire bid.
Sorry, I didn't see them on here. I'm like, well, okay. Got it. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? It passes eight zero. Thank you. Can I have a motion to move into executive session? Nate, second Blanca, all in favor?
Hi.
Bring us the time to talk to you and I do not envy your job. I think all of the candidates are extremely qualified. So good luck.
Thank you. Thank you again for coming to all, to all the candidates.
I was saying to Seema earlier, I said, we are so blessed to have, you know, such people stand, you know, that are willing to stand up and, and, you know, put themselves out there. So thank you all for coming.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move into executive session. And to the candidates, we'll be reaching out to you in the next day or two. Thank you.
Thank you.